Well, the councillors will get underway again. We're on to item 21, wastewater connection Churchill Hill Road.
Willing to move? Willing to move?
And I assume you're moving in the right direction.
Yes, I am.
So Laura, do you need to contextualise this or just take questions? Councillors, are there any questions?
We should... Sorry, which number are we?
We're on item 21, wastewater connection to 38 Churchill Road.
Sorry, I skipped one. Thank you.
I'm sorry Laura, if you were going to make some comments, but I agree with the option 1, the recommendation.
So we'll take it as moved and seconded, but I'll just give the other councillors the opportunity to ask any questions. councillor Van Der Wiss.
Have you considered the situation because of the unstable land, of a long period of pipe breaking and incredible loss of water happening as a result? Possibly worse, destabilisation of the land?
So that was one of the considerations in terms of the risk of putting a pipe above than anything else. The property actually has roof water, so there is a limitation to the amount of water. It's not connected to mains water for that to be able to flow through. And one of the applicant's proposals was therefore to make sure that they actually had suitable drainage around the pipes, such that if there was a leak in the pipe, that would actually follow the line of the pipe rather than escape into the slip area. So effectively a drainage trench to collect... If anything comes out of the pipe, it goes into the drainage trench and out through that route rather than into the ground. And it would be no more water and probably less water than you would have going into the ground through a septic tank system anyway. So it can be appropriately designed out or the risk significantly reduced through the design of the connection.
Can I just add to that? There was referencing here from the environmental consultant, I think. Here it is on page 21.10. The pipe would be installed in quarters with the engineer geologist's recommendation to be laid in the bed of course gravel with an underlying companion 75mm perforated drain pipe brought to the surface that's down at the end. So that if it leaked, it would leak into the drain pipe and come out. That's the consultants.
Right. Yeah, I just wonder how practical it is to do that and hope that it doesn't go into the subsort. But yeah, fine, I can accept that. The drainage work, it says, sorry, on 21.3. It says the drainage work was not protected by an easement and has not been maintained since installation. Trees fell in 2011. Can you just further explain what the relevance of including that kind of past situation is for the current one?
I guess what we were trying to do is give some context to the consent having been granted. And also, that does speak to the uniqueness of this particular situation in terms of coming to grant this or consider this application now.
So what you're saying is that the covenant that's referred to in 15 on the computer freehold register, that that will ensure, you're quite confident that having a covenant will make sure that you don't get similar problems as had in the past?
That's part of the resource consent process. But yes, my understanding is that that was the mechanism used through the resource consent process to make sure that those historic situations couldn't recur.
Final question. Are you entirely happy with the recommendation or is it one of those sort of finely balanced situations?
I think from a wastewater connection point of view, this is a better outcome to allow a connection than to continue with a septic tank. Either it's possible, as was the applicant's stated intent, but certainly it is... It does add to... All the technical advice we've been given is that it does add to the stability to take whatever water you can out of that slip. So that was the basis of the recommendation.
So in fact, connection is a slip mitigation method. Is that something that the rate payer really wants to pay for? Given the only advantage goes to the owner of the property?
I'm not sure that the rate payer is actually paying for it.
Well, in supplying the service.
This individual will be rated for... This property will be rated for that service once they receive it. So I don't believe that there's actually an additional cost to the rate payer.
In the past, anything out of zone has been viewed as an additional cost or potentially an additional cost because of the weighting of the existing system and the extending of the zoning of it. Is that not the case?
So no, in this particular case, it is an unusual situation in that there is no need to extend the actual public pipe. The extension to the property is purely in the applicant's own land. So it's a very... It's a long lateral, but it doesn't create any additional private infrastructure. And the capacity within the Green Island system, because of its nature as having previously taken a lot of industry, there is actually some unassigned capacity. So normally, in the vast majority of places where you would be looking at this and have come to council before, the capacity that is available within the network has already been assigned to growth. We've done the calculations to say, well, for all of the lots that could develop within the catchment, if they all had a normal amount of demand that we would expect, is there any left over? There is a small amount left over. There are some questions about the assumptions made for industry in Kaikara Valley. But it is quite unusual that we don't believe that there are any operational impacts to this. We're not taking on any additional infrastructure. And there is some additional benefit that could be argued around the slip mitigation.
Okay. Final question. If we were to get another PSIS operation in Green Island, the Abitwa or Cement Works, would we still have the capacity to do that? Or would we not anymore because we've tended to let it go to this sort of...
Certainly, we are assuming that the industrial development in Kaikara Valley would be of a lesser demand than previous industry. So hypothetically, if we were to get those high water demand industries, that may be a problem. But that's not a circumstance that we're seeing a lot of evidence of being a problem.
Okay. And if the unusual situation did come along where you didn't want a lot of water there, is it really hard to increase from other areas, say, increase the capacity to that largely undeveloped area where the cement works and PSIS used to be?
So this is actually wastewater that this is affecting? And that's about the pipe constraints and the treatment plant? At the moment, the treatment plant could actually... Would benefit from additional demand because it was built for something different. So it's difficult to generalise about those kind of scenarios without knowing what kind of demand you're looking at, what the composition of it is, what the volume is.
But this isn't going to affect it majorly?
It's marginal. It's very small.
Thank you.
councillor Laura.
Excuse me Laura, can I just ask a question? It says that the trees that were supposed to have been planted or that were planted to prevent a rockfall or landslide have been cut down. Was this by the same person that actually planted the trees? Or has the property changed hands?
The property has changed hands. The trees were planted at the time when the work was done required by the Green Island Borough Council. So it's a new owner and the covenant will ensure that those trees are retained in perpetuity.
Thank you. Yep. And so they will be replanted? They'll have to replant them as part of the conditions?
They will, yes.
The other question is, do we have other sites around the city where there's trees being planted specifically for that reason that could be removed at any time by a landowner? Is there situations?
I don't know. I can't answer that.
councillor Paul.
Looking at the site and you're talking about replanting the vegetation on it. Is it nakeal and peeing your drains? Or is tree roots getting into your drains? And what have we done to...
Swing it when you put your new pipe in. Tree roots have got a bad habit of going into the joints and blocking?
The vegetation plan that has to be approved has to show the locations of the drains etcetera that are being proposed. But the bulk of the drainage... The bulk of the planting from the plan that I've seen is on the remainder of the site away from this edge. So it really is to the west side. The proposed pipe stays close to the eastern boundary. The bulk of the planting is pretty much the rest of the site with the exception of that, the actual building platform. If there is a need to keep that particular area clear of trees, I don't think that's material to the overall planting plan.
With the invention of these welded pipes rather than the push-together pipes, would that not be a better scenario for this? There's no chance of the roots getting into it?
So the detail of how that planning proposed to actually construct the pipe will come through with the building consent. So at the moment, this is about approving the principle of whether or not they can have a connection. Any of the detail around how they design it, obviously subject to the information they've already added about the additional protection will be dealt with through the building consent and the detailed technical approval?
councillor Hawkins.
Yeah, thank you. Comments made in this paper around the potential for precedent in granting this. It's the opinion of the author that there won't be greater demand as a result of this because the land instability of the area makes it unlikely for people to want to build on it. And just looking at the overlay, the landslide overlay and the map of residential dwellings on page 21.2, it would seem that it hasn't put people off particularly up until this point. So what confidence do we have that there's been a change of attitude?
I guess it is something that can be argued either way that your observations are certainly correct. My understanding is with any resource consent application, slope instability is a consideration that the consent team go through. Alan may be better positioned to comment.
If a resource consent was required, yes, that would be one of the assessment matters. Because an important thing to note with this particular site is that on their title, there's a requirement under the building act to say that this place is a hazard and that carries risks. And that the insurance companies will see that, the landowner can see that and they know that it's all their risk and getting insurance can be very difficult.
And just further on that, I'm trying to reconcile the idea that granting this and this connection will make the land more stable. But that in turn, the land being more stable wouldn't make this area more desirable in terms of further residential development in that area?
I guess what a change coming up is with the 2GP, that will put in place a different framework. So that'll mean when someone comes to ask for a resource consent, we will do a bit of a different assessment because there's a different policy framework and there's a greater emphasis on the hazards. So what the outcome might be in the future is unknown. So we really have to take each one on its merits.
So this connection was applied for as part of the resource consent?
No, the resource consent was separate. And they had designed it to be totally independent of connections. It was their preference. But they got the consent without the right to connect.
Had that not been the case, would that have been... Is it possible that a different outcome would have resulted through that consenting process? Had they not had that capacity or expressed that they had the capacity to do that?
I don't think it would have changed the outcome. But they had to do one before the other. They couldn't have both at the same time. So they had to go through a resource consent and that connection. It would be probably inappropriate to go for the connection beforehand if you don't have permission for a house.
So just to be clear, the applicant is still maintaining that a septic tank system is possible on that site? And that's consistent with our application? Through both processes, they've indicated that they would prefer a connection and that a connection would give additional risk mitigation as opposed to it not being possible to put a septic tank system in. And the resource consent was granted on the basis of a septic tank?
And just lastly, when it was going through the consent process, what was the opinion of Water and Waste Services? And has that changed since then? And what was the deciding factor in that opinion changing, if it has?
So the opinion of Water and Waste Services at the time was more strongly towards not granting. The key reason for that was at the time, the applicant's initial proposal was that we would extend the public sewer network closer to their boundary. And so what is shown as a lateral in the current proposal was effectively a public sewer in the road. And so what that would have meant is that we were carrying all the risk. We would have had a public sewer and all the maintenance costs. After they got their resource consent and when they went to apply for the connection, they had changed their proposal such that the additional lateral was entirely in their own land and therefore entirely their asset?
councillor Pete.
Thank you. Is there anything constructed on the site, on the property yet?
Yes, there is some sheds on the top end of it. Yeah, the southern end.
At 21.11, is that what we're looking at?
Yeah, on 21.3. Well, if you're looking on 21.11, you can see above consented house, some markings. In fact, there's a building in there.
What's on the left of that? That looks like a yard?
It is a workshop type thing where the chap's got diggers and that sort of thing.
Is that an issue for the stability of that area?
No, it shouldn't be. The planting regime's very large and there's planting above the house and at the northern end, the lower part of the slope, there's 1.1 hectares of trees to go in there. So I think it was 60 something percent of the property will be planted out excluding around the curtilage of the house, which is a traditional sort of garden stuff.
No construction of the house or...?
No, the house hasn't started and the house will be on piles.
So can I just follow that up, clarify? On the bottom of page 21.1, number eight. Having granted a resource consent, the council cannot act in a manner that prevents the use of that consent. So they have a consent to build a house and that's not what this is about. They can do that anyway. We can't take that away from them. So this is only about how they deal with the wastewater. councillor... You move? Councillor was it? He said he moved. councillor McTavish, did you have a question?
Yeah, just interested in 25, the planning considerations which specify... Sorry, which specify that the act of landslide feature should dissuade any further residential intensification in the rural area. Given that that wasn't the case in this particular case, do we have... What is anticipated might be different about other undersized rural sections in this area that would result in a different outcome?
We have to take each one on its merits and do that case by case assessment. What set this one apart was, in a holistic sense, the planting out on the site with this new vegetation was seen as a positive. As it stood, it could remain bare. And that does pose some threats. But having granted the consent, there was that requirement that the land be covenanted and trees planted out on it so which would improve the stability and provide some protection for those houses that are further down the slope. So the initial point was each one on its merits. And as I said earlier on, the 2GP has a different policy framework and hazards do get some more attention. So what the outcome might be in the future, I can't say. But on this one, I think the decision was made.
Sorry, I don't want to get into discussion about the second generation district plan. But what I guess I am wondering is whether any assessment has been done about the number of undersized rural lots in the Green Island catchment which might have similar features or similar lack of covenant as councillor Laura referred to earlier? Because ultimately, that is what is going to define whether or not there are any analogous sites where we might see a similar situation.
So we certainly haven't done that level of detailed analysis in terms of those that have those features and also are close enough to a wastewater system to be in a position to connect. But I think the additional piece, which I think would be... The combination of being in that catchment and having had some protection put in place in the past that has then not been able to be preserved, it's unlikely to be common, even if there are other sites where there is the combination of a slip feature and proximity to the pipeline. The number where we've also had that history of the particular site, I think, would be extremely limited. But we don't have detailed analysis because by virtue of the fact it wasn't covenanted, we didn't know it existed till it read its head.
Further questions? It's been moved. councillor was it? Second councillor Benson-Pope. The recommendations stand. Councillor was it? Do you wish to speak to it?
Look, it ticks all the boxes for me. I think it is the exceptional circumstances. I'm really happy with that. There is no cost to the rate payer. But there's a fee for the connection. And the one that I was concerned about most, but I think this is quite unique. I don't think it will trigger a raft of similar applications at all. So I'm really happy with it.
Well, from my point of view, I support this for two reasons. One, it seems that the installation of a wastewater connection on this site will mitigate the risk of slippage on the site compared with what a septic tank out for would have. But with regard to the precedent that's set, I think it's important to distinguish between the precedent that's been set by the granting of the building consent already and the precedent or the opportunity that's been given, that might be given by a new connection. Now, there's no or very little new council pipe work for anyone else to connect to. So the way I see it, it doesn't provide an opportunity for any other household to come along and say, oh, that pipe's been run up the road. We'll connect into it as well because the pipe's a private one. No one else can do that. So the effect of this, in my understanding, limited to this site and there's very little cost to the rate payer or opportunity for anyone else to piggyback on it at all. Which is why I support it. Are there any other speakers? councillor Benson-Pope?
Well, just... I clearly support this given that I'm second to something. But I think it's important that... Sorry. I think it's important there's just procedural comment made in respect to the two mentions at least of the second generation plan, which has no status other than the fact that it's been advertised, hasn't been heard. And I think it's important that clearly no one around the table is going to have taken any notice of what's in it in respect of this issue. But I think it's important that there's no second guessing of what might end up as law as part of the hearing process not yet begun.
Are there any other speakers? councillor was it? You wanted to exaggerate or reply?
Well, I thought we'd done that.
All those in favour please say aye. Against? Thank you. Right, we'll move on to item 22, community engagement for 2016-17.
Pete, to move the recommendations to chairman.
Just second of that. We'll just clear questions first and then... Welcome Simon. Right, do you wish to contextualise?
So we've presented in front of you that proposed plan for engagement this year, which is less extensive than last year's long-term plan. Just in summary, there's three tiers of events proposed and three strands of digital engagement. And we'd appreciate your feedback on the suggestion for the local drop councillor one-to-one sessions. We've suggested some potential locations and would appreciate your feedback on those.
Okay, questions? councillor Hawkins.
Yeah, thank you. I'm pleased that you mentioned that it's less extensive because I do have a question around that. The logic, I'm assuming, is that because we're asking fewer questions, the consultation on those questions would therefore be less extensive. But I don't see how, even with fewer questions to answer, we would want to narrow the engagement in those questions, if you follow.
So the difference this year is that we are sending a copy of the consultation document to every household. So we're hoping that by doing that, that will allow us to do a slightly less extensive series of meetings given in that they will be receiving the information at home and can follow that up with attendance at a meeting, should they want to.
Is that approach based on anything that we know about the success or uptake of direct mail as a mode of consultation? Or is it just a punt that if we jam them in every letterbox, then we'll need to do fewer consultation meetings?
In the past years where we have put them in the letterboxes, we've still maintained a relatively high level of submissions. Of all the councils in the country, we do have quite a high level of uptake in provision of feedback.
And just lastly, this is... I mean, it's generally speaking, what we do for most of our consultation processes is that we have a public meeting and we invite feedback on social media. And to be a potentially sparsely attended councillor drop-in session somewhere or other, if these are all the decisions, if these are all the options that we've run with, I'm interested, were there other options for potentially more dynamic engagement that had been considered and were discounted? Or is this the sum total of potential options for consultation on this that we have generated?
So a range of options were considered. And what we've presented here is what staff suggest is appropriate for an exceptions-only annual plan. One of the things that we've done is tried to support, suggesting that we support community boards to hold local events. So we're not trying to... I suppose we're trying to be smart about the way we resource community engagement. So supporting community boards to run local events and running events that we hope will be effective. So trying to target them in the areas that we think is likely to be the most interest.
So you're holding back your aim material for the next long-term plan now that annual plans are smaller affairs? I mean, saying that there were other options you considered, but because this is a smaller process now, they were discounted? Or am I just reading?
We have... We've talked in the past about sessions. Sessions where all of the council sits and sits at public meetings and we have big workshop sessions. What we're suggesting is that that sort of activity is more appropriate for a long-term plan process rather than an exceptions-based annual plan?
councillor McTavish.
Thanks, Bishop. I guess maybe some of my questions have been asked by councillor Hawkins. I guess what the background to my questions is that when we were advised of the changes to the LTP... Sorry, to the... Well, LTP and annual plan processes through the LGA amendments, one of the things that was highlighted as potential positive is the opportunity for us to do some quite different things around consultation. So I just wondered, reading this document, I guess I wondered where that thinking had gone? Because it seemed to me that there wasn't much that was different about what was being proposed here. And given that we do have now quite a flexible, quite a range of possibilities in terms of our approach, yeah, whether there had been any... Yeah, I guess it's been asked, whether there had been any alternative approaches considered and discarded? Or whether it was considered that this was a tried and true approach which was delivering outcomes for us?
I'd suggest that it's a bit of both. It's looking at what's... I'd suggest that it's a bit of both, it's looking at what's worked in the past and trying to try some, trying to pilot some more innovative things. We've suggested a video, for example, a video resource which can be used on the, on the website and also can be provided to the community boards to, to help them run their local events. So we are trying, trying to integrate some new things within the resourcing available and bearing in mind that it's an exceptions-only annual plan.
I guess my second question sort of spills over a little into the other report, so I'm not quite sure where to ask it, but historically we have had data which has suggested that we have had a large amount of feedback from some demographics and a very limited amount of feedback from other demographics. And with that, with that information, I guess I ask the question, are we targeting our consultation or community engagement to fill those demographic holes in the responses that we're getting? Doesn't seem clear to me from this report that we are, or that there is an active intention to do that, but would seek your feedback.
I'd suggest the approach is through the range, the range of methods proposed, so digital engagement is one of the, one of the means that we're using to try and target the younger, younger demographic, as well as having some events down in, say, the North Dunedin end of town for the student population. So, yeah, I suppose it's in the variety, in the variety of methods that are proposed is how we've approached the demographic spread.
Has been any engagement with the target demographics to establish whether or not the proposed mechanisms are going to work for them?
No, but when you say the target demographics, to whom are you referring?
Sorry, I guess for me, looking at the data, the limited data that we have historically had, it has suggested that we do get a large amount of feedback from, say, the 40 to 17-year-old age group, a very limited amount of feedback from anyone under the age of about 20, and certainly demographic hole in engagement between the age of about 20 and 35. So I guess, yeah, the question that comes to my mind is, are we involving those demographics in designing our community consultation so that we target them appropriately and in a way that is going to work for those people?
Personally, I've been involved in discussions with the OUSA and OPSA, so talking about the tertiary level engagement, and we have potential to talk to the youth action committee and the groups that we have for youth to see whether the proposed approach works for them.
By sending the document out to every household, we are hoping to try to access that group, that working population with families group that we traditionally aren't able to access. We get some engagement from them where there is an issue that they want to engage with, but, yeah, as with many other councils around the country, that is the group that is difficult to get engagement.
I guess I'll touch on it in debate, but I guess one through the question would be, has there been any question, or is it possible that sending a questionnaire out to our people's panel, for example, asking them about methods of engagement and for ideas about methods of engagement might be one way to better target our audiences with engagement mechanisms that work for those people?
We could try that. All I'd say is that the policy team work on an ongoing basis with, with groups, talking to, getting feedback about consultation and engagement processes that we've used right across council. So the, so the process that we've presented here is based on feedback, ongoing feedback from, from communities. I mean, I prefer to ops, for the student level, every time we meet with people, we're trying to seek, seek feedback like that. We could try, we could try the people's panel as an, as an extra.
Councillor Z?
I looked at this here as a, just to approve the proposed approach, and I thought that you would, and this is true, to report back to council board, I'm thinking perhaps the community development meeting of the master of the case, because, you know, the, while we could approve the proposal today, it may very well be with the input from the community boards, that you may change your views, not necessarily markedly, but certainly change your views. And in particular, for example, you know, Portobello's traditionally been a very sort of active group down there, and that's not mentioned in one of your four sites, but it could be, and it could be instead of, you know, something else. So what I'm saying is, what you've got, what comes out of this meeting here today, will you report back to council before such time as you actually publish what you're going to do to the community?
I think we were, we were hoping that we'd get a bit of a steer today, so the intention is that all, the offer is there for all community boards, for them to host an engagement meeting, which staff will support. So the four that we'd suggested here were in addition to those local, those local meetings, so that, yeah, they're extras.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Just, and just because someone mentioned the youth action committee, I just for clarification, were they specifically approached for feedback in the development of this process?
No, what I, sorry, what I was suggesting was that we, was that we could have further discussions with them, we haven't, we haven't to date.
So we have a youth participation advisory group, a youth action committee and a youth council, and none of those groups have been specifically asked for feedback on what our consultation will look like for the annual plan?
That's correct, we haven't asked them on this specific, on this specific approach, but the approach is based on the ongoing discussions that we have with, with groups right across council about, about engagement.
Councillor P?
Thank you. Just in terms of the intensity around the, the community level, I wanted, you mentioned event for a singular, did you have, are you restricting, restricting community boards to one event in their, in their areas, or would you, you know, it just says will be supported, and just wondering how many events you can support?
Being realistic, I, I suppose we're sort of assuming that it'll be around one, one in each area. If there's an area where there's particularly hot topics, we'll look at, we'll look at what we can resource, but just, you know, with the staff resourcing we have, I think we were sort of aiming, assuming it was going to be around one, one in each community board area.
Right, okay. And in the urban core, that's not part of our community board area, did you have a number of events that you were thinking of, or a number of organisations? We've already had references to, to youth.
As it sets out, it sets out in the report that suggests three locations, North Dunedin, South Dunedin and Tyree-Mozgill. We've since done further work trying to identify potential venues and suggesting one in South Dunedin, one in North Dunedin, potentially one in Outtrim and one on the coast at Waikato.
Yeah, I wasn't thinking of the councillor-led ones, I was thinking of the other tier of opportunity for community groups to run. Is that, are you, so that's separate from the ones that you're talking about, North Dunedin, South Dunedin, Mozgill, Tyree. So I just wondered about, have you got any more detail to offer about that?
We'll contact through the, through our events and community development group, we'll contact, make it, make it known to community groups that's potential to host your own, host your own meeting. We plan to put together a resource pact so that these, as far as possible, these groups can host their own meetings, but realistically, they, you know, it would be preferable to have some staff, staff and ideally councillor presence as well. So we haven't got a maximum number, we're putting, making the offer to the communities and community boards to run those events, and we're, I suppose, going to wait and see what, what response we get and then look at what's realistic to, to resource.
Well, I have a final question, I don't know if there's any others. I note on page 22.2 in your report, under councillor-led drop-in sessions, you say councillor feedback is sought on whether one session should be provided in a rural or coastal location rather than the central city. So presumably you would like that in the resolution. And it's been noted that certainly on Peninsula, traditionally there's been a very big turnout, compared certainly with any other place. So I would suggest, I don't know who's going to move this, but I would suggest that the Peninsula and probably Port Chalmers be considered as venues, I'm just throwing that up for consideration, because those are the areas where we have had interest in the past. So someone, councillor Z, you said you'd like...
Yeah, I have to move that and take into consideration the comments you made, I agree with hopefully, as I said before, Portobello, certainly it's one area that has always shown interest, and Port Chalmers is much the same. So I'd pick those two positions, but I'd like to leave a resolution sort of loose so that staff can actually, for example, you talk to the Mozgill community board, they might want to do something, or they settle something in their own area, although they are, they are mentioned here, so that's covered anyway.
I mean, the point is that both Portobello and, both the Peninsula and Port Chalmers have community boards that are pretty active, so it may be that that's exactly what they pick up on, and we don't need to run an independent one, so I'm just, you have to sort it. So you're moving the recommendations with the suggestion that those are two locations, speaking of that?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Is there a second, councillor P? Right. Do you wish to speak to it in the first instance, councillor? Any further speakers? They're being done, I'm going to put it all...
I would like to speak to it.
Right.
I guess I wanted to take this opportunity to highlight the fact that I feel that we ought to be doing a better job of targeting our engagement to the demographics that we know we're not able to engage with, or we historically haven't been able to engage with. And given the flexibility that we now have with the LGA, I think we do have room to do some more innovative and interesting things around that. So we know that young people are probably not going to engage with a pamphlet that arrives in the mailbox that looks like it's bare for their parents, that looks like it is full of graphs and, and tables and figures which don't immediately scream relevance to them. We now have mechanisms in place that enable us to have conversations with young people to refine that approach. And it's not just young people, we know that we have an underrepresentation, or we have some indication of underrepresentation from other groups like Maori in our, in our engagement processes. We have a new disability awareness group which has recently been appointed by council, who have previously expressed frustration with some elements of council's consultation procedures and mechanisms. So there are a raft of different ways in which we can have conversations which would allow us to refine our approach, to make it more relevant and more accessible and to deliver better outcomes for audiences that we are not currently able to engage with. And I don't really feel that that has so far been reflected in the proposals that we have in front of us. Now, I know we had a conversation the other day, chairs and staff may well be proposing to do that further on down the track, but given that today the recommendation is moved is that we approve the proposed approach, I guess I would just like to see it further refined, that those conversations do take place, that by approving this approach today, we're not approving something which is set in stone, that we enable and empower staff to go away and have some conversations with those relevant entities to ensure that we are making the most of the opportunities available to us to engage in an appropriate way with parts of our community that we have not managed to engage in the past.
Further speakers? Okay, I support this resident recommendation. I'd have to say that it's a pretty fraught area in a way, because we tend to beat ourselves up as if we're responsible for the fact that people don't turn up to meetings. And it's very difficult to get around that. I can recall the, the meeting in South Dunedin where the, the audience was easily vastly outnumbered by the staff and councillors that were there. So staff are challenged by finding, to find ways to engage in it, it is really difficult. And some of the, I'm sure that some of these points will be taken on board, and I think all we can do is try all the different avenues we have, including the digital, including the people's panel, including the youth council that we have, all of them. But, but I think we shouldn't be beating ourselves up, certainly not beating staff up, if it's not as successful as we hoped it might be. Councillor Z, you want to write a reply?
I just want to pick up on what councillor McTavish said. The fact is, councillor McTavish, the annual plan is not an exciting document for a lot of young people to read, and while I agree with what you've said with regards to connecting with a whole lot of groups, and not having with any of that, but to try to get them interested and then actually come along and make their comments about annual plan is very, very difficult. So if staff can find a way of doing that, well, good luck to you, but I'm, I'm saying don't hold your breath, because nothing is going to happen.
All those in favour, please say aye. Against? Thank you. Now, councillors, we're on to item 23, 2016-17 aquatics fees, options.
Deputy to move option one.
So you're going to move? Clear questions and then come back to you.
It's rounding us.
No. Right. Well, where are we? So anyone, no one needs to be here to speak to this, do they? Do you want to?
I think it's a debate.
Sorry. Right, there's two options here, it's been moved, but I'll open it up to questions. Is there anyone having a go? Councillor Hawkins?
Yeah, just a quick question, and it's with regards to those that are under the rounding system that's proposed would be increased by more than three percent. Just seeking assurance that notice made of those so that when we go into the next round, should we go into another round of blanket fees and charges rises, that those are considered potentially to be rounded down rather than rounded up, or just, just the cumulative effects of this decision are lost in the, in the out years from here?
Yep. Any further questions? Okay, option one has been moved, it's been moved councillor Vandiversus, a second, councillor Z. Councillor Vandiversus, do you wish to speak to it? Are there any other speakers? Right, I'm going to move, I'm going to put it, all those in favour, please say aye. Against? Carried. Thank you. Okay, now, we resolved at the beginning of the meeting to move item 27 into the public part of the agenda, that's what we will do now. So we move on to what was item 27 and now becomes item 24, just for the sake of numbers. So, let's wait for the thing to get up here.
Yeah, just a question of process, I guess, in the first instance. Yeah, just a question of process, I guess in the first instance. Were we to want to include questions, whether it's demographic data being collected or questions on specific, for specific feedback? Do you want them moved as amendments to this resolution? Is that the, I mean, I'm just noting this is the quote first draft in the report, just seeing how that would work from here.
I suggest we take it page by page, and if there is something, we can put that as part of the resolution.
Is your question councillor Hawkins, if councillor were of mind to include questions, more questions about the specifics about the people who are responding, is that what you're talking about?
Or just as an example, but all other topics that we're currently not seeking feedback on?
This is not so much feedback on the, just to clarify, this is not feedback on the proposed annual plan, but feedback data that we might collect about-
It's both.
Both. Yes, well, it's appropriate, I think, now to raise them, any extras? Further questions? Councillor McTavish?
I have a range of questions, I guess the first one is about the demographic data. So my recollection, and I stand to be corrected, but I don't believe that we have asked for this data for very long. I thought that we had only asked this for one year, but I stand to be corrected on that.
We've asked it twice.
Twice, we've asked it two years. So this, the feedback here that says that while locational details are sought, it is not proposed to seek demographic information relating to age and annual plan year as results have been consistent over recent years. That's over the last two years.
And we have also captured it in other consultations, I believe.
I guess my question comes from a place of having a desire to see those demographics change. So how might we, if we're not going to collect data on age, how might we assess if we are reaching a wider range, a wider audience with this year's plan if we don't ask those questions?
I'm perfectly happy to include the demographic information. You said bear in mind that not everybody will answer it. So it may be that a certain demographic cohort is actually more inclined to provide that information than others.
Okay, thank you.
Just being aware of that. Yeah, it would be limited to the formal feedback because we wouldn't be doing that via the social media.
I guess just to follow on from that, given the nature of the demographic, that we're using social media, we wouldn't be able to capture those, that, the demographic nature of those people responding via social media because they wouldn't be using the official form. So there's just that caveat, but we can do that if the councillor wishes.
Thank you. And in relation to the central city plan timeframes, I guess I am struggling to understand the rationale for this not being a material change. The impact, we're in an LTP and we were to get submissions from people on whether or not something should be in one year or another. That generally would have a material, particularly for big ticket items like central city plan transportation works, that would be a material shift in our budgets, whether it was in one year or another because it would impact on the ability of council to fund stuff in any given year. So I guess I'm struggling to understand why it's not considered a material shift, given that they are fairly substantial sums and they are moving from year to year.
Can we defer to-
Repeat the question?
Yes, please.
So I'm just curious about this central city plan timeframes issue and wondering why it is not considered material when they are quite substantial sums moving between years in our LTP?
So I have given that advice on the basis that in the LTP, the project is described as occurring within the lifetime of the LTP, so it begins now and finishes at the end date. So the actual phase of that project is currently in the design phase, in preparation and planning. And the time at which the activity occurs is the, or the year in which the activity occurs, which is your construction and where your budgets are adjusting, is the year in which you consult. So that is the minimum requirement under the new LGA provisions. Of course, it is open to council to consult on any issue any time it wishes, outside of an annual plan process even. So the advice from, that staff have received and preparing your consultation document is to propose questions that are consistent with the budget meeting in January and on topics which councillors have identified as areas for additional or different spending, those being material significant and some other matters which council was seeking community opinion on.
Thank you. My third question relates to the draft consultation document and the comment, I think it's on page seven, about strategic fit, saying that you're working on a design solution to show strategic linkages. And wondering how that relates to the way that things have been grouped? So under each of, it seems to me that the intention of the grouping as it currently stands is effectively along the lines of the four wellbeing strategies. Was that intended or was that accidental?
It was a bit of both. We needed to group them in some manner and that seemed to be the most logical way to group them, but we were aware that we needed to be able to make the linkages back through the strategic framework. And this was a good way to achieve them by putting them in these broad groupings.
So I guess, and I'm not sure we wish it powered, to manage feedback rather than questions, but the feedback that I would have is that it would be clearer if they were actually set out under the strategy headings. Because to me, the work that we're doing in South Dunedin or the coastal erosion issues are not actually about looking after our environment. They happen to be matters that are covered by the environment strategy. But they're actually about looking after infrastructure, protecting people and property, not about biodiversity or matters regarding low carbon development, which are the primary matters covered by our environment strategy.
The difficulty that we have with that, and we've had these discussions, is so then looking after South Dunedin, is it about parks and reserves, the parks and recreation strategy, is it about the water strategy? Is it about the transport strategy? Is it about social wellbeing? Is it about economic wellbeing? And of course, it's about all of those things. So given rising groundwater, you know, any division, particularly we've got our four major areas of service delivery, you could also argue potentially it's about spatial plan. And then you've got the four wellbeings and they kind of mesh together. It's impossible to separate these things out. The more you have, the harder it is to separate them out, which is why kind of roughly apportioning them to the four, to the four wellbeings was considerably easier than trying to apportion them to the four wellbeings and the four areas of service delivery.
I can understand the challenge. My feedback would still be that I think the title as it currently stands, which is looking after our environment rather than environment strategy or something which is broadly speaks to a document with specific aims and ambitions rather than a direction statement would be a more helpful way to organise them.
That I think is sensible.
I guess my final question just relates to the thinking around the tables. So in many cases, the tables illustrate what is, or in all cases, the tables illustrate what is happening or what is proposed happening in the twenty sixteen seventeen year, what is effectively additional to the original draft budgets. But they don't speak to what happened and or what is happening in the fifteen sixteen year. So people don't have an understanding of what the change is. So for example, the Aratai investment, people might read this as a new additional spend of two hundred and forty-five thousand, which it is on draft budgets, but it is actually just maintaining the service levels that we currently have in fifteen sixteen. Similarly, the smaller readers grants, one might read that table and unless you read the text, you wouldn't know that that's actually additional to an existing twenty, fifty thousand dollar spend. So it may be clearer to show a fifteen sixteen year with fifty thousand, a sixteen seventeen year with seventy thousand. So it's second bit of feedback.
Just, I'll carry on with questions, but I've just been thinking through and discussing with chief executive how we deal with this. There may well be, from councillors, suggestions that we add things into here, and I'm perfectly open to that. So the way that I think we should do it, since we'll have to vote on each one, is we'll go through questions and then I'll ask individual councillors who wish to add anything in, or take anything out for that matter, which is unlikely, to move that and we'll discuss it and vote on it. And then when that's exhausted and everyone's suggested everything and it's been voted on, then we'll go back to the overarching recommendations and endorse the content as amended by the previous motion. So that's the way I intend to do it. I think that, I think that's, we'll cover it rather than going to the recommendations, can't go to the recommendations and endorse the thing as it is if people want to change it. So we'll vote on each change and everyone will have an opportunity to add anything that they want. So the next question is councillor Vandiversus.
On twenty-seven point one, it gives reasons for confidentiality, being the disclosure of information for which good reason for withholding exists. Can you give us some idea of what it was that made you think that this should have been a great paper? Which parts of it you thought might be reasons for withholding?
Chief, do you want to do that? Chris, do you want to do that?
Sorry, could you repeat the question?
On page twenty-seven point one, under reasons for confidentiality, it says that this would be public excluded because the disclosure of information for which no good reason for withholding exists, and I wanted to know in quite a voluminous report, which bits you thought might be good reasons to withhold from the public?
It's the public conduct of the relevant part of the meeting and the good reasons for withholding is to maintain legal professional privilege. The basis for that is that any changes you may wish to make to the consultation document, you may wish to receive legal advice as to whether or not it complies with the minimum requirements in the Local Government Act. So that's the purpose of expressing the reason for confidentiality. Does that answer your question?
Not really, because we may want legal advice on any item. Surely that can't be a reason for putting it into non-public. And even if it was a reason, which I very much doubt here, why would we not then have the option of going into non-public if we wanted to get that kind of legal advice? And what's special about this item twenty-seven? That from any other item, we're putting it in a great paper?
So if I can answer your first question, every report that councillor receives has an element of legal advice in it and you'll find it in the summary of considerations page attached to every report. In this case, the legal advice is that what's now presented does meet the minimum requirements under the Local Government Act. Of course, if you make changes to that document in the terms of the meeting, that advice may change and you may wish to receive different advice. If you're in a position where the meeting is open to the public, your privilege is lost. You don't get to maintain legal professional privilege when part of your discussion occurs in a public forum. By presenting the information to you in a public forum, you have the choice and your privilege is maintained. And I understand that matter's been dealt with earlier today.
Bizarre. Never mind, on to the next questions. On twenty-seven point nine, council term debt. I've been through this many years now. I, from two thousand and four to two thousand and eleven, I think had to fight to get a graph in the first place. And then had to fight to get the x-axis and the y-axis of a similar size. Why is it that on twenty-seven point nine, we have an x-axis compression of less than half the y-axis to make the council term debt look like a very flat and unthreatening thing?
I'll answer that one. So you, we were advised of this by email, this document is a rough working draft. It is not the final document that in any way looks like the one that will be sent out to households. And the x and the y, in fact, it's the other way around, the x-axis goes that way and the y-axis goes that way. It's the y-axis that's compressed in this beauty just by the buyer, but in fact, it will not look like this when it goes out in the final documentation. There will be roughly equal proportions, roughly depending on fit on the page.
And I, another thing that I fought for for a long time regarding debt was the context of the debt. This here shows the recurrent hope for falling debt in the future. I have repeatedly referred to our previous financial officer's umbrella graph, which shows the preceding years of debt rising and the hopefully future years of debt going down again. Why is it that in this particular graph on twenty-seven point nine, we only have the future and we don't have the context required of the last ten years?
So the context is contained in the graph over the page, so it is fairly easy to look at both. So in the graph over the page, it does go back to two thousand and four. And the graph over the page also shows not just the DCC debt, which is the blue line, but also that shot of the stadium, which is red, the company's purple and the total green.
Yes, it certainly does show all of those things, which is why, all the more reason why when we're dealing just with council term debt, we should really have it all on the one graph since it's so easy to do. And I fought for it in the past and we've had it in the past. I'm wondering why it is that we've gone backwards.
The number of years in this graph, because we're predicting forwards for ten years, this makes this graph of a size of a number of years. Because we're unable to put the company forecasts in this document, we don't forecast, we don't forecast forward for the companies, which means that on a similarly scaled graph, we are able to look back ten years, we have the room to do that. You're more than welcome to suggest that we include a looking backwards graph in that document, in that graph.
I have in the past and been successful and hope that you'll consider it again this time. My next question-
Can I just say councillor, that's a good thing to move. If that's what you want included, then that's exactly the kind of thing that I'm suggesting that you move and we can decide on.
Okay, fine. Regarding our legal advice, that this from Ms Russia, that this is the minimum requirement to consult is where you have change in actual budget. And yet that change in budget, even though the quantum might be the same, we have had a substantial change in the cycleway budget because we've decided to do about a third of what was originally budgeted for, but much more expensively for the same money. So the minimum requirement to consult, I would have thought, doesn't just relate to the overall annual quantum. It relates to us actually doing something substantially different. And in the case of the cycleways, I would like to suggest that we are doing something substantially different. But more than that, this minimum requirement to consult, I don't think should be just what we do. I think that we should consult, ask for feedback on consultation areas that we know to be highly contentious and that we know that people are going to want to give in a- And that we know that people are going to want to give an opinion on and we should welcome. That consultation on those areas. On page twenty seven point seven, it says.
We're we're in question time. Can I suggest that what you're suggesting, and you've got every right to, is exactly what you should put into a motion?
Yes, okay.
So stick to the question.
On to the next question.
And then put that in a motion so that we can decide on.
Okay. Uh on twenty seven point seven, it says this change, and they're referring to the change because of different year now. Uh means that we won't specifically be asking for feedback on projects where our plans haven't changed since the LTP was published last year. I believe that this is correct and I am incorrect. And I'm wondering whether staff would be uh amenable to the idea of changing it. So that it reads, this change means that we may not specifically be asking for feedback on projects where our plans haven't changed. Because to say that we won't is.
I'll I'll put that down as one of the changes. It seems.
Okay.
I mean, if you could let's say we don't have to. We're we're not compelled to.
Okay. Um so yeah, those are my questions and um if a motion is necessary.
So if if any councillor wishes to add something, please prepare some words and we'll take them one at a time.
Thank you.
Um councillor Hawkins.
Yeah, thank you. Um my questions are around the central city plan work as well. And the argument is essentially that the change in the LTP budget for the sixteen seventeen year isn't material. Or significant. Um and that we would not consult on it until the seventeen eighteen year where the quantum is material or significant. But I essentially see that as a moot point because once we get to that stage, we won't have done the planning work. So we'll have to do the planning work in seventeen eighteen. So therefore the work, the physical works will have to be deferred. And essentially, we don't have that conversation ever if we don't have that conversation this year. And I'm just wondering if that had been considered by um staff who'd made that recommendation as a potential perverse outcome of not. Um having that, asking for feedback on that this year.
Call it rhetorical if you would. Or just include it.
Well, um if if it is a rhetorical question and if. Put it on the list and and move it and we'll see what happens. Councillor Betson-Pope.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Just like um staff to look at page twenty seven twenty, please. Uh and I'm mindful of the prohibition on wordsmithing or pedantry. Um but I'm wondering if it might not be helpful to not use the word pools in the first bullet point. For obvious reasons. It will cause confusion and it's like talking about pools. It's talking about funding.
Yes, yes, fair point. We'll just make that change. I don't think you need to vote on that one. We'll just make that change. Clarity as opposed to new.
I'm just looking at the information about the cycleways. I'm wondering if whether it's a little bit confusing because it starts by saying. We've seen a change in the way we deliver things because of lessons learned. And then suggests that the change in approach includes urban design led approach. Providing good levels of service for pedestrians, motorists and cyclists. It improves our streets. Is that different from what we were doing? Were we not providing good levels of service or was it not an urban design led approach or what? What on earth was it? And and in any case, what is an urban led design approach if it comes to that? Is there another way? The second sentence makes sense because it suggests that we're actually going to. Listen to stakeholders, test designs against practicality and then make a decision afterwards, which is. Potentially different from what we may have done in the past. But the first sentence doesn't. It sits awkwardly with we're proposing a change and this is it. Could we change that sentence too?
So so what you're asking is a clearer explanation of that section, so.
That first sentence, could it be reworked so as if this is the proposed change? What is the new thing we're doing in the sentence starting? An urban design led approach providing good levels of service so as we don't give the impression that that's a change. Twenty seven sixteen?
Are you able to? If this is just a if this is just a wording thing bestowed to you, comfortable with addressing that without the need?
I'm happy to do this later on.
Yeah, yeah, I'm 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 just trying to win away the the things that actually need emotion and the things that can be addressed. You make a good point. If it's acknowledged that it's a good point and it needs to be explained differently, then we can do that without.
That's fine, doesn't need to.
If you're happy with that, right. So that are there any more questions? Councillor Pete.
On page twenty seven point fourteen, um there's a reference at the bottom. To the South City area and I'm just wanting just to clarify what is meant by that. Because I understand it's different from South Dunedin. Are we meaning the shopping precinct?
No, we're not meaning the shopping precinct, but um if there's anyone from that team here can explain that that reference.
Can I? Yeah, can I suggest, do we just change it?
Yeah.
So the South City has a.
My my understa- no, I may get this slightly wrong, but my understanding is that. It was felt that South Dunedin, if that term were used, was too restrictive.
Yeah.
And that the area affected by, for instance, rising groundwater. Is the South City area which encompasses Sinclair, St Kilda, parts Cavisham, South Dunedin. And to and I think the term usually used is South City at Harborside. So that's my understanding is why is that? I see Nicola Law and is that? Have I got that right?
That's that's right. If um we can actually forward round to you the the plan that shows that the wider area that that is covered. So it was the area that's covered by previous engineering reports that we've had.
So that's the reason.
We can define that better.
I'm just suggesting it might be confusing to some people. Uh on the next page, twenty seven point one five. Um this under coastal erosion, the second paragraph. Um refers quite rightly to wider investigation, wider Dunedin coastal investigations. I'm just finding some folk might think seventy five thousand. I know it's only investigation, but even that number is pretty limited. I'm just thinking just maybe a a reference uh to consulting or working with the O R C on this. And I mean, this is their area as much as it is ours, one would have thought. But um I'm just seeing some collaboration sort of signal.
The next sentence.
What was it?
Next paragraph.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. Okay, yeah, fine, fair, fair enough. Thank you for that. Uh just pointing out a beautiful and very apt typo and same on the first bit, the seal wall, which it certainly is because it's got the eye picture.
Right. Councillor MacTavish.
There's just a couple of another minor ones and that is that if we're referring to South City, that should carry forward into the table. So the table refers to South Dunedin.
And I suspect if we had said South City without capitals, that might actually. Make it less likely people will think we're talking about a named suburb that they don't know where it is.
Can I suggest that it wouldn't be a bad idea to have an asterisk in it at the bottom? Or somewhere in a glossary style explanation, just say the area referred to as South City incorporates, but doesn't, you know, blah, blah, blah. All of them, make it really clear.
Um and in addition, on page ten, the heading that refers to groundwater and sea level rise. Um given that that is specific to South City and Harborside, I think the title should reflect that to make that clear. Because any of the coastal erosion issue should make it clear that that's in the rest of Dunedin as the table does, but it doesn't flow through into the actual text.
We we did um after discussion took out the word Harborside because for most people, they don't know what Harborside means. Most people, it sort of refers to those businesses down where Doug has his workshop and. So that became quite confusing, which is why we ended up using the term south of the city. Um but it.
Yeah, whatever term is decided on. I guess my my feedback is just in relation to the titles of this sections in the text, making them geographically specific.
We may look at putting a map on to help with that as well.
Councillor Betson-Pope.
Well, thank you. Um it's just on that very issue that I wanted to make a couple of comments. Thank you um Sue for that evidently sensible decision about removing the word Harborside. It doesn't mean anything to most people at the moment. And with no disrespect to people who didn't have the good fortune of growing up in Dunedin, living on the flat. Um deceits and inventions like South City are meaningless to most of the residents of the city. And unless we explain really clearly or use terms I understand, we're not consulting meaningfully. So can I ask my question? Uh please for further consideration be given to the um to the use of the term, whatever term it might be. That describes whatever area you're discussing and please to avoid inventing new names for places that people have called something else for decades.
Are there any further questions? Councillor Wilson.
Just to pick up on the point that uh councillor Pete made earlier about page twenty seven fifteen. It would appear on the second paragraph that the second part is almost repetition then. I'm just wondering if 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 you'd be happy with the words additional funding of seventy five thousand has been included in the draft annual plan. To do initial analysis on other parts of the Dunedin coastline at risk from adverse erosion. Because it really is only going to be at that price identifying them. Just to put those two sentences together.
Can you provide that?
Yeah, I'll provide that. Thank you.
Okay, that's all the questions. I'm going to move now to um to allow councillor, accept councillor's motion. So councillor Vanavis, you had the one here. I know you were the first up, so would you like to?
Um yeah, there's.
The first instance, can you state what it is you want to do and get a second then?
And then go for it. There's four things I'd like to do. The first of them is on page twenty seven point seven where it says. This change means we won't specifically be asking for feedback. I'd like that change to, this change means that we may not. It's been suggested generally be that may not is really what I think uh captures where we should really be coming from.
My second, I think we can comfortably accommodate that without a motion.
Oh, wonderful. Great. Let's do that then.
Is that legally may not or may not or perhaps we may? I mean, it's not clear.
Oh, I see.
If it's not permitted to, that would be a different matter, but may not doesn't.
Ah, ten degrees.
Uh that we may not specifically. It's may not specifically. It makes perfectly clear sense to me.
We may not.
Or may not.
But may not be allowed. It it's it could be read as but we may not. In other words, we are not allowed to.
Oh, hadn't thought of that.
That's the end of your.
All right. And in that case, um um.
May not necessarily.
May not necessarily is nice. I like that. Thank you, Your Honour. Uh your worship, sorry. Becoming a bit of a habit, I know.
So are you. Carry on, councillor.
Right. Twenty seven point nine, council term debt. My motion is basically that.
Hold it, Christie.
I'm sorry, I don't know what the intent is. If the intent is to say we're not legally able to, that's slightly different. Um but we say if it's may or may not, then we need to be clear that it's not a prohibition and that it's unequivocal. People understand what's being said.
But may not necessarily.
It it's like we might not be. That's that's really what you're trying to say. We might not be. That might be.
That'll be fine.
So there's things we're not consulting on.
Christie?
Whatever the CEO is happy with.
Yes, look, I I guess the um advice that you're needing on that point is that you've got an open text question. So in this part of your, it it that's at the foot of the document. In this part of your document, you're in the front part that you're discussing at the moment, you need to be very clear. What are the topics you are consulting on and are you consulting on anything else? Um so you need to be definitive in this point um about. Whether you are asking for feedback on other projects because later on in the process. Um you're going to be faced with submissions on those points and it will no longer be an exceptions based plan. This part of the document is giving you the framework for showing the community what you consider are exceptions. And what are material or significant things. And so the reason that sentence has been expressed in that limited way. Is to make it clear that the only topics you're consulting on are the things within your consultation document. And changing that will create a fundamentally different scope to your annual plan consultation process.
Then um my suggestion, councillor Vanavis, is that you put it into the motion and we can vote on it.
Um.
Okay.
Three, three, we should.
Sorry. Yeah.
Let's not vote on something we may or may not be ought to be doing.
I'm not sure how to operationalize your feedback, Christie.
Can I just ask?
Stick with what was there.
The councillor in question has a right to put any motion up that he wishes. Does Ms Russia's explanation change your mind about putting it there? Because she's making she's making a very good point that there's a legal meaning to this, that it's a framework. It doesn't preclude us from accepting submissions on other things. It's just that we're not specifically. We are not specifically consulting. That is a fact on those that anything other than what we're the exceptions.
My point was that we should be. We should be consulting on things additionally. And what this phrase says is that we won't specifically be asking for feedback on projects where our plans.
We can, we can um consult on additional things if they're put in.
Yes.
So we this the word remi- won't remains in there because we won't be specifically consulting on things that aren't specifically mentioned. And they can be added in in subsequent motions.
That's not what it says. Excuse me, your worship, but it says we might be specifically asking for feedback on projects. Where our plans haven't changed, not unless they're in this document.
My, that's my point.
Those are two different things.
That would launch us to only things that haven't changed, not things that are that we put in the document and would you like to talk about that?
Well, can I can I just go back to the advice from Ms Russia? That uh and you may need. You may need to reiterate this, Christie, but um what I'm hearing is. On the one hand, there's a there's a suggestion that we change this. On the other hand, you're saying, well, actually, you're fundamentally changing what you're telling the community we're doing.
Correct. And Sue, um there's also a fundamental change to council's earlier resolutions that passed in January. In January, council passed resolutions saying that particular topics would be the subject of consultation. If you are changing the and that consultation would be restricted to those topics. If you're intending to fundamentally revisit the scope of topics to be consulted on, that would require us to revisit earlier regulations.
So why don't we consider this paragraph at the end when you voted on anything else? And see whether you have decided that you will consult on things that were not changed since the LTP. That might be wise. So if we come back to this.
So I'll come back to that one. Give us the others that you have.
Okay, just before we leave this one. The way I understand it is that Ms Russia has said on the one hand that what we're quoting on specifically is a minimum. And that there are other things that we can quote on. And what this sentence says is that we won't be quoting on anything else, be be asking for feedback on anything else. Both can't be true.
Um I think there's a difference between what we are asking people to submit on and what we will listen to people submitting on.
Yeah, that's right.
Because they can come to us and talk about anything.
Oh, yes, I realize that.
Consulting specifically on.
Yep, absolutely. But what I would like is for us to specifically ask for feedback on issues. That haven't changed since the LTP. I think we should because it's a minimum.
Then that contradicts what we decided at annual plan and I won't be accepting that one because we we'd be contradicting it. Councillor MacTavish, you've been waving around it. Do you want to?
Well, your worship, I just wonder whether, um appreciated that we're coming back to this. But whether um Ms Russia may consider the legality of a different change, which may um. Fulfill what the councillor Vanavis concerns whilst also not being illegal, legally blah, blah, whatever. Um the.
Big process.
Yeah. So I wonder whether um if we changed it to read this change means that we aren't specifically underlined. Be asking for, we we aren't specifically asking. So the focus is on specifically asking rather than. rather than the not, which I agree is...
Nice.
Which means that people will not feel that they are shut out of providing feedback on other matters, but we're not saying, we're not fundamentally changing the legal outcome.
I'm, I'm sorry, I...
Yeah, I, I think that's, is that, except what you're reading?
Uh, I can consider that when we revisit that topic.
Sweet.
Moving along, graphs, basically X and Y axis to be similar, we've had that assurance.
Yes, so we don't need that as a motion?
No, you can take it out, we will just fix that.
Right. Term, term debt graph, if you're going to show term debt, the future hoped-for 10 years budgeted, in my opinion, should always be balanced with the past 10-year actual. It's easy to put on a graph, there's no reason why it shouldn't all be there together. Um, it was, I've been through this before, five years ago, hoping we can again go back to a situation where the actual last 10 years and the future budgeted 10 years can appear in the same graph, just for context. And finally, I was hoping that we could pursuant to what I thought was an agreement, although it wasn't put as a motion, in the previous council meeting where a number of issues were specifically excluded from specific feedback consultation. In particular, the South Dunedin flood response, which we now read to be the June 3rd flood response, I believe that we should specifically highlight that as an area for people to respond to, and also the Moskill pool. Because of the public interest, I recognise that we don't have to, because it's not necessarily a budget change, but I think that they are issues that we should invite feedback on, because they are issues which are very current in a lot of people's minds that I speak to, and because we aren't restricted to just the minimum of what budget change LTP thinks.
Can I ask, to ask, who start, what are the implications of asking for feedback on something that's not in the budget? Because there's nothing in the budget for the Moskill pool, and there's nothing specifically in the budget on the 3rd of June flood response, so...
At annual plan, the note that I made was that we quite, was that we discussed this briefly at annual plan, and it was agreed we wouldn't put it in. That doesn't mean you can't raise it today, but in the discussion round the table, tell South Dunedin flood response, do you, are you talking about the civil defence response, or are you talking about what we do with regard to the longer-term issue of groundwater rise, or are you talking about maintenance? What, what are you referring to, councillor Vannevis?
What I'm referring to is people's interest in knowing what we are doing differently as a result of the June 3rd flood, and there's very wide...
See, and the issue is that that will be coming up, there are reports coming back, but it's not an annual plan issue, so generally what we, our advice was, that the annual plan consultation be restricted to annual plan issues. And so the extra money that's in the budget around exploration of groundwater rise and the ongoing impact of what we're going to do in South Dunedin in the longer term, there is now budget, there is a new item in the budget for that.
I realise there's a hundred for that.
And that is, that is discussed.
That is discussed, but our flood response is not, and to me, oh, the feedback I'm getting from people is that they're much more interested in our flood response, given that Ms Russia has said that it's a minimum requirement to consult on the things where there is a material change to the budget. What I'm looking for is two items in addition to that minimum. One of them is the flood response, and the other is the Moskill pool. Now, if, if the, if the meeting isn't wanting to get specifically highlighted feedback on that, I, I'm quite happy, but I do want to pose it as a motion, or I do think that it is appropriate for this feedback.
Happy to accept it as a motion, we might separate them, if people might want to vote on them separately, but I do need to ask, what's the question you're asking about the Moskill pool? If there's nothing in the budget for the year, what's the question?
Why isn't there nothing in the, in the year would be the first question that most people have already asked me.
You want more on that? Because last year during the end of LTP, it was put in the budget for the following year.
I think we're talking it.
I'm just seeking to clarify, and it's all right fine saying that we ask a question about the proposal in the school pool complex, but I'm asking, what is the question? Because there's no budget in there to say, yes, we want it there or no, we don't, so what's, what's the question?
The question is simply to highlight that we recognise it as an issue for feedback, and we invite feedback for it. So the question is, do you want, we, we already asked the question in this document, do you want to feedback on a whole lot of different things? Um, you know, cycle ways and groundwater sea level and all of it, you know, but we don't ask people whether they want to give feedback on the flood response or on the Moskill pool. And to me, we should.
So, so they are, in a way, they're two quite different things, so the, the Moskill pool budget for the coming year is exactly the same as it was in the LTP, which is why to date it's not included.
It's, it's why it's not in the minimum requirement, I'm looking for an extension to the minimum.
You've moved these, is there a second?
Four.
Right, your second, okay, so, and I'm happy to take it a bit separately, now, bring me, so, are you happy to have considered that you've spoken to in the first instance? That's all right. Uh, are there any, now, would you like to speak to councillor Calvert?
Sorry, that, if, they're all part of the same thing, I'm wondering whether the answer to that third one could be to add a bit of explanation, saying that we aren't specifically asking for feedback, yakity yak, but question seven allowed you to provide feedback on anything else.
That's not, we're not up to there yet.
Sorry, I'm not with you.
Number three that's up there?
Yeah. It's number two, you seconded it.
Yes, I'm talking about number three though, are we not talking about number three at this, are we not talking about the whole?
No, 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 you can speak about any, you're speaking to it.
Okay, I'm speaking to number three, and I'm suggesting that the changes councillor McTavish was suggesting, we aren't specifically asking for feedback, and the rest of that sentence, we could add to the end of that, although you are welcome to make any other feedback on item seven or something, so as it's clear that although we're not specifically asking for this, there is a chance to make a comment on things we haven't specifically asked, so just adding something to that sentence, so as it tells people, go to the bottom and ask, you know, add something in if you feel like.
Are there further speakers? Right, um, right, I'm going to put them, you can speak to them.
We speak to the whole lot.
You can speak to any, but I'll take them separately, but you can speak to any or all.
I, I generally agree with a lot of this, and I don't think there's an issue, and it's clear, it's been clear since the first time we had a discussion about the exceptions-only format, that we were always going to accept and listen to submissions of whatever kind that came along, as we always have, and that will inevitably happen, and, and clearly people will come along and talk about whatever's on their mind, or whatever they think we're doing wrong or right, and, and I don't think there's any useful purpose in, in encouraging or anticipating another rerun, for example, about Moskill. We know that people in Moskill want a pool, the argument is about how big and how much, and that's going to be part of our process in the future, it's not part of this plan. So I can't see, even though we will get some submissions about it, I can't see any useful purpose can be served by wasting people's time reiterating and re-litigating what they've already said probably in other submissions already. And, and the same thing applies with even greater strength about the South Dunedin issue. I'm as interested in as everyone else in this authority in finding out more detail, robust information about lots of facets of what went down and what didn't go down, but until such time as we have that information, I think it'd be an exercise in futility to encourage other retired engineers and other experts, self-appointed, to tell us what the problem is. We know a lot of what the issues are, but until such time as we have the definitive audited report or peer-reviewed report back on this table to discuss, I can't see that there'd be any useful purpose served in dealing that issue into the annual plan process.
Into this annual plan process.
Councillor Wilson?
I just have to agree with councillor Benson-Pope, I'm really concerned that by putting up two, we, to vote for two would be to say, we don't know if any information, we're not going to tell you what the figures are to fix or not to fix, where the actual issues are, but, but we're just putting out a kite to get really uninformed discussion. What will happen, I expect, when we get the final report on 3rd of June, will be some options papers which will be either within budget or require a separate consultation if they're substantially over it. I, I think the people of Moskill, of South Dunedin, of Brighton where they're affected will want informed discussion about that. I think if it is a substantial piece, it should be a piece out on its own anyway, because I think we really need to focus our minds on the priority we give to renewals and whether we need to speed that up, but that's a much bigger piece than just putting up a kite and letting people say whatever they like to say, because that will be really uninformed and uneducated, and will not have any quantitative, it will be uneducated to the extent that we haven't informed them as to what we think the costs are. I'm not saying they won't, they'll be uneducated people, and please don't take that as that point, it will be that we don't, haven't informed them to the extent that we can to get, make the consultation worthwhile, and please don't quote me anywhere else that you might want to misquote me, councillor Vannevis, on that point.
I'm getting it right now, thank you.
So, um, so, but as far as Moskill pool goes, we haven't got any other information, and I don't know that people were aware that the, the Moskill, the Tari Community Facilities Trust and some councillors are going on a very quick trip to look at some pools and to get, again, get better information, and that's about getting information up before we start making decisions, so please let the processes work, that we get the information to the people so that they feel informed and then can be part of that decision-making.
Further speakers?
Sorry, can, I've made a suggestion to add something to the end of four. These are his ones, aren't they? Yes, but that last one...
Look, you've spoken and I can't, there's a chatter going on, I can't hear, um, we'll move on, um, this, you've spoken, are you, are you amending it now?
I made a suggestion, an amendment, and the mover has agreed to.
I thought it had been done, sorry. Which, is this the...
Four, to add in, to add in, at the end of that sequence, although there is an ability to make comments on other matters at the end of the document or...
Right, I'm sorry, I thought that didn't...
I thought it had to have been.
Okay, in speaking to this, I can support one and four, I don't support two and three, because I don't believe, as other speakers have indicated, that we'd actually get anything useful, we're not asking a question, we're just saying, tell us what you think. By the time this comes around, we will have had reports that will have informed us more far more than we have now about the infrastructure performance particularly of, of South Dunedin, and I, so I, with regard to two, I just don't see that we're going to elicit anything that would be of any use at all, it would just take up a lot of time, but with regard to three, I just, again, don't think we'd have any information that we don't already have. We, we know what the people in Moskill want, there's a lot of work going on behind the scenes, and I just don't think it would add to the conversation, and this is meant to be a focused conversation about what we're spending in the 15, 16 year, and I think it would only get confused by a discussion about things that have nothing to do with the budget in that year, but that's where I sit. Councillor Vannevis, you'll have a reply.
I'm very grateful that you're supporting it, one and four, and hopefully I don't have to speak to either of those. Regarding two and three, the idea that we don't want to highlight a specific issue because we're worried about uninformed and uneducated feedback on it is one which I think will go down in my personal history of being on council as an absolute keener, on account of it's just so utterly counter to what the whole idea of consultation is. When Matt talked about the June 3rd flood, he said that it would just take, there would be a lot of response, we would just take up a lot of time, were his words just now, if I've written them down correctly. The fact that it would just take up a lot of time is basically a tacit agreement that there would be an awful lot of people that would have a lot to say about the June 3rd flood response, and by denying number two, what we're saying is, we don't want to hear these people, I want to hear them, because I've had a lot more useful information from people that went through the flood, people that have been associated with the workings of getting the flood to go away, contractors that have rung me, people that have a lot to say about it, and I think that it's our duty as councillors to actually invite specific feedback on what should or could have been done for the June 3rd flood event. I'm not saying that these people are going to be necessarily well-informed, and I'm not going to claim that they are necessarily even going to have to be seriously considered in many cases, but I think they should be heard, because there's a lot of people who suffered through that. As someone who filled sandbags all that night through past 1.30 in the morning, and delivered sandbags to a lot of desperate people whose houses were being inundated, those experiences are not something that you will ever forget, and they are not something that we should relegate to some kind of expert report that's going to come many, many months after the event. We need to get the feedback from those people, I believe we need to invite it. With the Moskill pool, I agree, there isn't such a strong argument, there has been a lot of information put out there, but the fact that a year has passed and that there has been some changes to the proposal, a lot of people saw it always as a four-pool complex, and now it's been strongly suggested that a two-pool might be affordable, and then there's a lot of pushback for the four-pool, again, to me, this is something which we should specifically welcome and highlight as a subject for more feedback from the community. I don't think we've heard it all, and I don't think we should be afraid of anything uninformed and uneducated, especially if there are a large number of people that are interested in that. Thank you.
Before I put it, can I just make it clear that any indication that if this discussion, if the submissions on, for instance, the 3rd of June flood, aren't invited to the annual plan, that we won't hear them at all? There are reports being written, and there's been consultation going on, and submissions will come back on that in any case, I'm just, just making sure that we don't give the impression that if it doesn't appear in the annual plan, with, frankly, I don't think it belongs, but that's my opinion, it will still be canvassed. So I'm going to put one, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against? Carried? Two, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against?
Aye.
That's lost. Three, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against?
Aye.
It's lost. Number four, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against? Carried. Thank you. Now, can I invite further additions or suggestions to the content of the consultation, Dr councillor Hawkes?
I have a list, there are only four, and they're fairly specific, and they're all relevant to the annual plan, but you...
Oh, Pam's already got it, I take it?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Um, just for the interested, do you, do you have a second already, or are you going to see if you can entice one with, with you put it up? That Benson-Pope, right. Would you like to speak to them while...
I can, I can just introduce the...
You can go.
Yeah, thank you. Um, so there are four, ones broad overarching statement and three are more specific, the first is asking for specific, including a specific question on delaying the central city upgrade, and we've been told that because the 16, 17 quantum doesn't meet the significance or materiality threshold, that it, it shouldn't be specifically consulted on, but as I... But as I perhaps did in question earlier, I think it makes it a moot point in that when it does meet the threshold next year, when we decide that we are pushing it out a further year, the capital work can't get underweight because the planning hasn't been done. And so essentially, this is the only year, if we are to defer the entire work programme by 12 months, this is the only year where we get enough opportunity to have a meaningful conversation with our community as to whether or not they want us to delay our central city upgrade. So I think it needs to be included in this year's consultation document. I've included one which brings questions asking for submitted demographic data back into the consultation document. One specifically around, in the feedback at the back of the document, it conflates the investment in City of Literature and Art of Toy and it might do that with the economic development funding now that, now that I think about it. No, it doesn't. So whereas in economic development, the different project items that are being funded are itemised for the City of Literature and Art of Toy funding, it's conflated as a $295,000 figure. So just asking for those to be split out in that questionnaire section at the back. And D refers, what's, taking into account what councillor McTavish mentioned earlier, including total budgets and 15, 16 budgets in activity areas where the funding is being increased. So for some of these, these are areas where there is no budget currently and we're allocating budget and some particularly, you know, there is already a city marketing budget and we're proposing to increase it to a certain level, but the consultation document doesn't tell you where it's getting to. And I think that that's a valid, it's useful in terms of context to know what the total budgets are for the...
Just a quick question about that one, what do we do about the items, for example, where there was money in the budget for one year and you voted to put it in for another year?
That is covered by the...
Will that be covered?
It's covered by there being...
I just wonder whether if we just simply said where we've got budgets and years, we just as default position include the 15, 16 year? And so you don't need to say in activity areas where funding's being increased, we can just do it in all of the tables that where we've currently got?
I'm comfortable so long as it's clear what the total budget line is and not just the additional budget line that's being proposed, that's certainly the intention. So as long as that can be worked and then I'm fine with that.
Can I just ask, Ms Rusher is seeking to attract someone's attention with, you have any point to make or take?
Yes, sir, sorry, I was signalling to officers at the table, that D is an item that is included in supporting documents, but perhaps Ms Ellen can advise further.
So I think just to clarify, the request here is that it's for the specific project lines only, so we wouldn't show that in supporting documentation, that's more at full council level. So the example is for the city marketing line will show what the budget is before this additional funding.
Yes, so we're happy to amend those tables to make that one.
Further speakers, councillor Calvert?
Can I ask a question? Does the mover intend and be that it would be a necessary item?
What's... No, people, it's never necessary, it's just asking in the same way that we don't, it's not necessary that you answer all of the questions that we ask in the document. I take your point, we're not, I don't want to compel people to tell us how old they were, if all, God forbid which ethnicity they might be. But no, it's a...
Or whether they're binary, they...
Indeed, indeed.
Further speakers, councillor MacTavish?
Just one further question and it's of the move in relation to A, only elements of the central city upgrade or central city plan are intended to be delayed, I think. So would it be possible to insert, includes a specific question on delaying elements of the central city? And I think you mean plan rather than upgrade.
Sorry, I've been... My legal question, was that question, sorry?
So just in relation to A, it's just elements of the central city plan, I think, that are proposed to be delayed. So are you comfortable with amending it to read includes a specific question on delaying elements of the central city plan?
Specific?
Yeah.
I concern about, essentially about using the term central city plan full stop, is that people don't know what that is or what that means. So as long as we're also going to include, as opposed to central city upgrade, which is quite clear in what it is, that, well...
Of course we all know.
We'll have to write a description for this, we can't just put this question in out of the blue, so we'll have to tell people what that means.
As long as it makes clear in context that I'm comfortable with it.
Further speakers, councillor Benson-Pope?
Well, I think it's a pretty self-explanatory and straightforward and in respect of the semantics of the first question, I'm not expecting, for example, that our de-wordsmiths over here are going to phrase a question that says, are you outraged at any potential delay in making our city more beautiful? I think they can probably, as we all would be of course, I think they're probably more than capable from the questions that they've already set relatively neutrally, to come up with a question that isn't biased or unnecessarily provocative.
Further speakers? I'm going to, does anybody wish to vote on these separately or is everyone happy for them to be put as one? Happy to be put as one, I'm going to move it, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against? Carried? Are there, councillor MacTavish?
I'm not sure if I need to move this one or not, but Chief Exec, in relation to Tiaw Turua, it's not actually explained in there that the funding is intended as a placeholder for actions, initial actions that will be required as part of the strategy. At the moment, it just describes the strategy, but doesn't actually say what the money would be for.
Actually, we should just fix that, that's just unclear, I agree.
And the other question, two other issues, the place, Tiaw Turua and the sea level rise budget, I think, and possibly one other, were placeholder budgets, so they weren't fully costed at the time that we put those budgets in.
Seventeen A.
The seventeen A money.
Yeah. And just leaving it in your hands, but that may need to be specified so that when a report comes back explaining it's a slightly different budget, it's clear why. And I guess the final question is, do I need to move that we change the topic headings to strategies or is that just going to be done?
Were you wordsmithing it?
We'll wordsmith that so that it's really clear, particularly around that, looking after the environment, that all of that money isn't about the strategy, that it's about a number of issues that are related to a number of broad strokes of what we've done. So we'll just wordsmith that.
Thank you.
Councillor Wilson?
Again, I'm just checking that the changes that I suggested to the coastal erosion one were just going to be, and over the page on the cycleway, there was the words in the area, that was okay to be deleted just because it didn't make sense. And the second paragraph... This is a typo, thank you.
Okay, are there any further suggested additions, any motions anyone wants to raise? Would someone then like to move the recommendations on page 27.1? And I think we just need to amend the A so that endorses the content of the draft consultation document, including amendments, that agreed, including the full back form, that's the only thing I think that needs to change there, would someone like to move that? Councillor McTavish, seconded councillor Lord? Do you wish to speak to it? Anyone else want to speak to it? I'm going to put it, all those in favour, please say aye. Against?
Carried.
Thank you. Now, I'm going to move from the chair that we move into non-public, publicly excluded from the following parts of the proceedings as per the order paper, seconded councillor Pete. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against? Carried.